Can everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions? Good evening. This evening, the Board of Education is recognizing Parkway Partners. In addition, we'll hear from our Superintendent Dr. Keith Marty, who's going to talk about the School Board members. First, I'd like to invite Mrs. Annie Dickerson, Parkway Communications and Community Relations Coordinator, to introduce several Parkway Partners.
I think I need it a little higher. I'm short, but not that short. Thank you, Ms. Feldman, and good evening to members of the Board, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. I am honored to be part of the recognitions tonight because it highlights the important role that our community plays in our schools. We are fortunate in Parkway to be surrounded by thriving cities, businesses, big and small, entrepreneurs and community leaders. What a unique opportunity we have to offer Parkway students and teachers with real-world, relevant access to knowledge, potential career opportunities, and a greater sense of community. Representatives from the organizations being introduced tonight recognize, as we do, that the work of a school district cannot be fully successful without the business organizations, community members, and parents who support our schools. As you know, we introduced the inaugural class of Parkway Partners to you two years ago. These partnerships have provided a platform to continually identify new ways to support shared goals for our community. Dr. Marty and district administrators have continued to meet with a number of business and community leaders to identify additional partners. The Partners in Parkway program supports our mission by creating lasting partnerships with business and community organizations who are dedicated to enriching the community through education. Through these types of partnership activities, we will improve the educational experience for all our students, and we will better prepare them for the workforce and post-secondary education. Now, it is with great pleasure that I introduce to you our new Parkway Partners. As I call your name, I would ask representatives from each organization to come forward and be recognized for your commitment to Parkway Schools. You're right on top. First, the City of Manchester, we have Andy Hickson, the City Administrator, and Barb Stevens, who also represents our partnership with Manchester Arts. And we clap. Andy asked, he said he had an interpretive dance prepared for you this evening, which I encouraged him to perform. We can always use a little dance at a board meeting, right? I think he sings, too. The Variety Club, a new Parkway Partner. Please welcome Barb Kramer, Program Director. We would also like to recognize a new partnership with Schaefer Autobody, who could not join us this evening, but we welcome them into our Parkway Partnership Program. This group represents our new Parkway Partners and more opportunities for our students. Please join me in giving them one more round of applause. Don't move yet. We have also invited other Parkway Partners here this evening. These partners, we have ongoing relationships, as you've seen over the last couple of years. I will call your name. Please ask that you come forward and be recognized. Is Mayor Nation here this evening with the City of Chesterfield? Unless you have a dance. With the Junior Achievement Lori Jacob, President and CEO. Maryville University School of Education. Please welcome Dr. Kathy Baer, Dean of the School of Education. Please welcome Dr. Don Cook. He is the Coordinator for Middle School Mentors. Mr. Ron Moore and Mr. Clifton Berry. He has an entourage, Mr. Cook. They're so friendly. We have an ongoing partnership with the Oasis Program in Parkway. Please welcome Jeannie Foster, National Tutoring Manager, and Barb Clark, Parkway Oasis Coordinator. And we like her boots. Desi likes them, too. Another group that always brings the party, we have PACC D here this evening. Vicki Manning, President. Meg Marion, Vice President. Peggy Welker, Secretary. And Paula Haring, Steering Committee. It's like a reunion. The Parkway Alumni Association, Mimi Holder, President-Elect. Two of my favorite people, only because I got to spend so much time with them in November. PTO Leadership Council Co-Chairs Carol Watchman and Jen Kristofferson. I think this is their second time being recognized at a board meeting this year. I don't know if you get an extra cookie or something. Extra cookie. With BJC, Mary Ann Esser, who oversees our Pre-Professional Health Sciences Academy. Please welcome Mary Ann. St. Louis Civic Orchestra. Please welcome Larry Levin, President. Right here in the front. Be nice. And last, but certainly not least, a lovely group of ladies from stages St. Louis. We have Tali Allen this evening, Katie Hayes, and Chris Nordstrom. We have a number of partners who couldn't join us here this evening, but we still would like to recognize them. The West County Family YMCA. We do have one more snuck in. Chesterfield Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. Agnes Krista. We also would like to recognize the West County Family YMCA, Chesterfield Arts. We have ongoing partnerships with Kidoba, Nationwide Insurance, and, as mentioned, the West County Family YMCA, which is so important to be mentioned twice. Look at this lovely group up here. Please join me in giving them one more round of applause. Thank them for supporting our schools. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to call in Dr. Keith Marty, Superintendent.
Well, thank you, Board of Education. And I just want to take a moment to also pass on my appreciation and the appreciation of our district administrators and staff and community to our partners, who, we could tell a little story about every one of them. We don't have time tonight, but they really do serve in so many ways to enhance, as Annie said, our classroom instruction, the work of the district. So again, thank you very much, partners, for being here and all that you do. Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, the Missouri Board of Education or School Board Association, I should say, has designated January 25th through the 31st as School Board Recognition Week. We're a little bit ahead of that, but we don't have a board meeting before or until, I mean, until that time. So we're taking this opportunity tonight to recognize you. We are pleased, really, to, every year, take some time to recognize our Board of Education during this time for the work that they do. And it is volunteer work. I think we need to mention that. And it does take a lot of time and energy, a lot of study, a lot of expertise to be on the Board of Education. Our Board has pledged themselves to our students, our school district, and their committed work certainly earns them a lot of recognition and honors and certainly is a reason why our school district is the district that it is. The mission of the Parkway School District is ensure that all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of a changing world. And this Board works to enhance that mission and make it a reality in all that they do. So tonight, we want to take a little time to recognize our Board members, one by one. And our superintendent's action team is going to join me in that recognition. And I'm going to start. It's my pleasure to start with President Feldman and say a few words. And what we're doing tonight, we have a certificate for you that we want to pass on from the Missouri School Board Association. And we also have a book that's entitled, "212 Degrees: The Extra Degree." And just a little bit about this book for our public. It's a wonderful little book. And it really talks about the difference that one degree can make. For example, the difference between 211 and 212 degrees is one single degree, but it's a difference between something being very hot and something having the power to actually move in terms of boiling and boiling water or steam. So we really think it's worthy to pass this on to our Board. And I want to particularly mention, in the case of Beth, that she certainly represents, I think, that extra degree that we're talking about. Because to take on the Board Presidency requires someone who's willing and committed to put in a lot of extra time. It's, all of you do a lot of extra work, but Beth, in particular, as those of you who have served in that capacity as President know that the extra degree is really, has to be there. Appearances, words. And I really feel that, from my perspective, Beth has really grown in to this leadership role. I'm so impressed with her ability to stand and deliver off-the-cuff comment, her ability to help us out through some problem-solving situations, and always really there to be supportive of our entire staff, our students, and our district as a whole. She truly does represent the finest work of all the Board and our community. And Beth, I'm very, very proud of you. And therefore, I want to give you the certificate and this book and say thank you for all you do. And now, Dr. Watson.
It's your turn. Good evening. I have the pleasure this evening of recognizing our Vice President, Mr. Chris Jacobs. Chris joined the Board in 2008. Chris demonstrates knowledge and appreciation of what it takes to provide a school environment where all students are insured, capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. Chris is profoundly committed to Parkway and to the education of our students. He participates in meetings, action teams, special task forces, and even sends friendly emails when meetings are occurring and he's not there. Chris can often be heard spreading the great things about Parkway that are going on on a daily basis. But we also know that we can also hear Chris often telling a joke or two. And many of us wait with anticipation to hear Chris's latest joke. So in honor of Chris, I've been reading a few joke books. Got this one. Laugh Your Head Off. Nutty Knock-Knocks. The Greatest Jokes on Earth. I've read them. And I've tried to find a joke to share with you this evening, but I couldn't. I could not find a joke that would top any of the jokes that Chris has shared with us over the years. So I went to a different source. I went to the book that you're receiving this evening. Just a few highlights of the book that remind me of Chris are: "Give a Few Extra Hours Each Month to Your Organization's Efforts, So at the End of the Year, You've Added a Full Work Week to Its Cause." That's Chris. "Thought it is important because it is thought that generally precedes action." That's Chris. "With awareness comes responsibility." Responsibility to act. That's Chris. "Take Action with Commitment." That's Chris. Chris, thanks for your actions, your commitment, your time that you give to all of us and to the entire Parkway community. We appreciate your service. My books are falling down. There we go. And I don't know who I'm calling on next. Amy Joyce.
Good evening. I have the pleasure to recognize Mrs. Dee Mogerman. Your gift this evening is a book called 212, The Extra Degree. It is about the principles of applying extra effort in every task or action. This book is also a reminder that small things can make a difference. One person can make a difference. School Board members across the country contribute hundreds and hundreds of hours each year leading their school districts. Dee, as you know, I'm a very data-driven person. So I thought I would put together some data points for you to demonstrate the impact of your commitment as a School Board member over the last 10 years. So Dee, did you know that over the last 10 years, you've watched over 14,000 students graduate? Did you know that you have voted to hire over 1,500 new teachers? Did you know that you have spent over 1,000 hours attending Board meetings? And I have the formula for how I calculated all of this. Did you know that you have voted on over 5,000 agenda items? Did you know that you have voted, over the course of 10-year, an operating budget that totaled over $2 billion? Did you know that you have spent over 5,000 hours on miscellaneous activities? Assemblies, recognitions, Project Parkway? And then while you've been on the Board, you have watched over 162 million bond projects improve our facilities and infrastructures. And that does not include the 94 million which is about to be used. I mention all of this only to say, Dee, that there is no data point that can describe the appreciation we have toward you as a dedicated Board Member, your dedication to education, your commitment to Parkway. And we truly appreciate you as a Board Member and a friend. And I would like to thank you for your service and leadership.
Wow, that was a nice way of saying, "Boy, Dee, you've been around a long time." So thank you. It's a good thing. That's what I heard. And what Chelsea shared, forgot to share, was that Chris Jacob gets all his jokes from Nathan Tyson. So we all knew that. So it's my pleasure tonight to thank and honor our newest Board Member, Debbie Hopper. So Debbie, I think what a lot of people probably wouldn't know about Debbie outside, she also along with serving on the School Board, currently serves as the Administrative Director of Research Operations at Washington University School of Medicine, where she had received her BA in Biology and a Master's in Health Administration. So education has always been of value to her. She's been involved, Parkway parent. She's lived in the district for over 22 years. Served in the Government Relations Committee. She has also participated in many, many Project Parkway meetings and activities, and also at her school-level activities. She has two children, one in West Middle and one at Claymont Elementary, and also involved in the community in other aspects, in Scouts, performing arts, her church, and other community activities. So we really appreciate the efforts you do community-wide, here for Parkway, but just for the greater community. Also, just that one of Debbie's most impressive attributes to me is her curiosity. And one of our mission statements speaks about her curiosity. And Debbie asks a lot of questions. I mean, a lot of questions. But that's part of who she is. She checks for details on things. So along with that is she wants to know what she's making decisions about. She wants to make informed decisions and wants to know why. And so we really appreciate that. And again, living our mission as a curious learner and in addition, serving on the Student Services Subcommittee. So we want to thank you for going that extra degree for the Parkway community. Thank you, Debbie.
Good evening. And I'm here tonight to present a copy of "212: The Extra Degree" to Kim Applebaum. As a token of our appreciation for your dedicated service to the Parkway School District. Kim has served on the Board for three years. Kim is also employed full-time and is an active parent for Parkway. Kim has volunteered for many years with Parkway, not only in the capacity as a Board Member, but also as a parent in the West High Band Booster Club, PTOs, grade-level party planner, Cub Scout, DUN leader, and volunteer with the Boy Scouts. When I glanced through my copy of "212: The Extra Degree," I found a quote that I think exemplifies Kim. It's on page 58. "As a parent, wake and act each day with the understanding that your actions will be absorbed by your children and your children will grow to be contributing adults to the level of your influence." How powerful, I thought. I believe that your dedication to Parkway Schools has been an outstanding example to influence your children and the children of Parkway School District. Thank you very much for your dedication and leadership you provide to Parkway.
Good evening. I am excited to recognize and thank Tom Applebaum for his service on the Parkway Board of Education. Tom just can't get enough of Parkway. He has lived in the district his entire life, and he is a proud product of Parkway. He left Parkway for a few years to go get a few degrees, like in geology and business administration, and finally, law. However, in 2010, he decided he missed us too much, and he came back to serve as a Board Member. During his service, Tom has served on the HR and Finance Subcommittee and on the Safety Network. Through Tom's diverse experiences, he certainly is able to help us think through various perspectives as we strive to achieve mission. Tom, in the book you're going to receive this evening, "212 Degrees", it describes one of the driving forces of achieving that extra degree as belief. When running for office for the School Board, Tom shared that he believes education is a lifelong pursuit which is based on a foundation established in elementary school. According to "212 Degree", belief fuels enthusiasm and enthusiasm explodes into passion. It fires our souls and lifts our spirits. Tom, we are so thankful that you have such a strong belief in lifelong learning because it pushes you to lead us in a way that will help us achieve mission with a brighter future and higher expectations. Thank you so much for missing us and coming back to serve on the Board.
Well, good evening. And speaking of coming back to Parkway, I have the pleasure of acknowledging Dr. Sam Sortino. You know, when I think about this book, "212: The Extra Degree", I definitely think of Sam. After all, who better to emulate the notion that a little extra effort, or in the book's case, one extra degree in temperature, can make all the difference in the world? And it's not just a message of action, it's a message of persistent extra effort over a period of time that helps a person achieve, as the book says, exponential rewards. From his early days serving as a teacher and mentor to his years of service as a school administrator and leader, as many of you know, Dr. Sortino spent many years in Parkway as an educator, to his more current years as a School Board Member and a community leader, offering selfless service and sage advice. Giving just that little extra effort in all he does in order to make a difference in the lives of the students and families in this community. And if you know Sam very well, you know that's why he's doing this. It's for this community. Dr. Sortino, on behalf of a grateful community and school district, we thank you for always giving that little extra effort in all you do in order to make Parkway such a shining star and to help our students succeed in school and life. Thank you, Sam.
Touching remarks. We appreciate it. We'd also like to thank our Parkway Partners that remain here for coming tonight and for sharing your organizations with us and with our students. We couldn't do the job we do without our partnerships with you. So at this moment, we're going to take a brief break, and we will return shortly.
All right, we are going to resume. With 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, we have one addition of a consent item, 11.21, approval of participation in Kagan Instructional Leadership Academy. 7.0 citizen statements, there are none tonight. 8.0 approval of agenda, January 14, 2015. May please have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, January 14, 2015. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 9.0 resolutions, we have none tonight. 10.0 communications, calendar of meetings. The Board of Education Midyear Retreat is scheduled for Saturday, January 24, at 8:00 a.m. at Parkway's Administrative Center. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 11, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. at Central Middle School, with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 p.m. 10.02, update on Board of Education candidate filing. To date, two people have filed for two open positions on the Board of Education. They are in order of filing, me, Beth Feldman, and Mr. Sudhir Rathad. Filing closes on Tuesday, January 20, at 5:00 p.m. at the Administration Building. The terms of Kim Applebaum and myself will expire in April of 2015. Now, we're going to go on to Board Liaison Reports, 10.03. You want to start with Mr. Applebaum?
Yeah, I attended the open house and pitch competition for the Spark Academy. That was, I mean, that's just a really amazing program, really incites so much inspiration with the kids and the community as well. You really get that sense, like we saw here tonight with the partners of Parkway, that the Parkway School District really does have strong backing within the business community.
Mrs. Applebaum?
I'm good.
No, Debbie?
Yesterday, Mrs. Applebaum and Dr. Sortino and I attended the Student Services Committee Meeting, Subcommittee Meeting, and talked with Dr. Watson and Ken McManus and Alyssa Kratz. Kratz and...
And Alyssa and Charlene.
Charlene, Charlotte E.J. And we talked about a number of issues regarding residency, the Character Education Development Program, and also about SSD services. And so it was a very productive meeting, it ended up going a little bit longer than what we had anticipated, but we got some very good information and updates about residency issues that are surrounding the district, trying to better develop some of our alcohol and drug awareness programs throughout the district, and getting updated on what some of the SSD issues are. And really very much enjoyed everyone's presentation and the amount of time and work that they put into preparing for that meeting.
Okay, sorry, we just had a little problem with the agenda, but we fixed it. So, sorry. Sam?
I just want to echo a little bit of what Debbie said. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Watson, and each of these sessions that we attend, she has an agenda that is just fantastic, so informative, and what I really like about it, and I think all of us who attend these meetings, is that we're just not listening. We have a chance to ask questions on the spot and get answers, and it's so informative. And we thank you very much for all that organization. We thank your staff who joins you in presenting to us and giving us the opportunity to get to know them, and to get a lot of our questions answered as well. I was particularly, I got there a little late, but I was particularly impressed with Alyssa's presentation on the special services. And she put together a document that, you know, if anyone really wants to get a good overview of special services in Parkway that provide for our children with special needs, it's outstanding. And once you read this, you'll have a good, clear picture of all the services that we provide these students. So thank you very much.
Just briefly, I had the chance too to go to that Spark presentation that morning. Actually, it was one of the judges there, and it was most difficult, because the kids really do a great job. You hate for someone to have to be designated as the winner when all of them really are winners, but I know some of them would like to get that recognition. But it was just fantastic, great time to spend there with them and see what they, you know, the difficulties they've dealt with, and how quickly they have been able to come up with solutions, and they really were very good. And I would just like to mention that Beth is not just 212 Degrees, she's a supernova.
Just one thing, Chris and I had the opportunity to meet last week, or the week before, with members of the PNEA Steering Committee, I'm sorry, Executive Committee, and some members of our administrative team. And it's so rewarding for us to be able to work in partnership with our PNEA, and our other work groups as well, but in this particular case, it was the PNEA. And there are always going to be times when there are problems in life, and true leadership works together to solve problems. And I'm proud to say that I was a member of that problem-solving group a week or two ago. So thank you to our PNEA Executive Board. Okay. I think we've covered our communications. We're going to move on now to 11.0, action items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Is presented in the January 14, 2015 board materials? Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed? Then, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. 12.0, action items, there are none tonight. 13.0, policy review, none. 14.0, here is the good part. Go for professional learning communities, like to call on Desi Kirchhoff, our Deputy Superintendent, and Liz Morrison, Coordinator of Professional Learning, oh, there she is. Professional Learning, I didn't...
All right, we are going to resume. With 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, we have one addition of a consent item, 11.21, approval of participation in Kagan Instructional Leadership Academy. 7.0 citizen statements, there are none tonight. 8.0 approval of agenda, January 14, 2015. May please have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education, scheduled for Wednesday, January 14, 2015.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 9.0 resolutions, we have none tonight. 10.0 communications, calendar of meetings. The Board of Education mid-year retreat is scheduled for Saturday, January 24 at 8:00 a.m. at Parkway's Administrative Center. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 11, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. at Central Middle School, with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 p.m. 10.02, update on Board of Education candidate filing. To date, two people have filed for two open positions on the Board of Education. They are in order of filing me, Beth Feldman, and Mr. Sudhir Rathad. Filing closes on Tuesday, January 20 at 5:00 p.m. at the Administration Building. The terms of Kim Applebaum and myself will expire in April of 2015. Now, we're going to go on to Board Liaison Reports, 10.03. You want to start with Mr. Applebaum?
Yeah, I attended the open house and pitch competition for the Spark Academy. That was, I mean, that's just a really amazing program. Really incites so much inspiration with the kids and the community as well. You really get that sense, like we saw here tonight with the partners of Parkway, that the Parkway School District really does have strong backing within the business community. Sorry.
Go ahead, sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry. Administrative question.
Mrs. Applebaum?
I'm good.
No, Debbie?
Yesterday, Mrs. Applebaum and Dr. Sorentino and I attended the Student Services Committee meetings, subcommittee meeting, and talked with Dr. Watson and Ken McManus and Alyssa Kratz.
Kratz.
Kratz and...
And Alyssa and Charlene.
Charlene, Charlotte E. J. And we talked about a number of issues regarding residency, the Character Education Development Program, and also about SSD services. And so it was very productive meeting. It was, ended up going a little bit longer than what we had anticipated, but we got some very good information and updates about residency issues that are surrounding the district, trying to better develop some of our alcohol and drug awareness programs throughout the district, and getting updated on what some of the SSD issues are. And really very much enjoyed everyone's presentation and the amount of time and work that they put into preparing for that meeting.
Okay, sorry. We just had a little problem with the agenda, but we just hit, we fixed it. So, sorry. Sam?
I just want to echo a little bit of what Debbie said. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Watson. And each of these sessions that we attend, she has an agenda that is just fantastic, so informative. And what I really like about it, and I think all of us who attend these meetings, is that we're just not listening. We have a chance to ask questions on the spot and get answers, and it's so informative. And we thank you very much for all that organization. We thank your staff, who joins you in presenting to us and giving us the opportunity to get to know them and to get a lot of our questions answered as well. I was particularly, I got there a little late, but I was particularly impressed with Alyssa's presentation on the special services. And she put together a document that, you know, if anyone really wants to get a good overview of special services in Parkway that provide for our children with special needs, it's outstanding. And once you read this, you'll have a good, clear picture of all the services that we provide these students. So, thank you very much.
Just briefly, I had the chance too to go to that Spark presentation that morning. Actually, it was one of the judges there. And it was most difficult because the kids really do a great job. You hate for someone to have to be designated as the winner when all of them really are winners. But I know some of them would like to get that recognition. But it was just fantastic. Great time to spend there with them and see what they, you know, the difficulties they've dealt with and how quickly they have been able to come up with solutions. And they really were very good. And I would just like to mention that Beth is not just 212 degrees, she's a supernola.
Just one thing. Chris and I had the opportunity to meet last week or the week before with members of the PNEA Steering Committee, I'm sorry, Executive Committee, and some members of our administrative team. And it's so rewarding for us to be able to work in partnership with our PNEA and our other work groups as well. But in this particular case, it was the PNEA. And there are always going to be times when there are problems in life. And true leadership works together to solve problems. And I'm proud to say that I was a member of that problem-solving group a week or two ago. So, thank you to our PNEA Executive Board. Okay. I think we've covered our communications. We're going to move on now to 11.0 action items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented in the January 14, 2015 board materials?
So moved?
Second.
Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries 7-0. 12.0 action items, there are none tonight. 13.0 policy review, none. 14.0, here is the good part. Goal Four, professional learning communities. I'd like to call on Desi Kirchhoff, our Deputy Superintendent, and Liz Morrison, Coordinator of Professional Learn, oh, there she is. Professional Learning, I didn't see Liz.
It's a privilege to be here in front of you again tonight to discuss Goal Four. As you know, Goal Four revolves around our professional learning communities. So, as stated, the goal is to develop and support strong professional communities that utilize data, knowledge, experience, and research to improve practice and accomplish goals. Why is that part of our goal? We're trying to get to all. And we think through the power of collaboration to get our best folks working together and communicating, that's going to reach that mission. We live in a cycle of continuous improvement as a school district. And we are learning, growing, and dynamic organization. And to that point, the district-wide implementation of professional learning communities marked a historic culture shift in professional development. As we created more opportunities and structures for our greatest resources, our educators, to collaborate and learn from each other in an effort to meet the needs of all kids. Prior to the 2012-2013 school year, professional learning communities could be found in pockets throughout the school district. Yet, the establishment of Goal Four in Project Parkway was critical in ensuring that professional collaboration would become systemic. Through the Steering Committee, the Project Parkway Steering Committee strategically and explicitly made professional communities a standalone goal. This empowered the Professional Learning Action Team, led by Liz Morrison, and comprised of representatives from every Parkway school to create a systemic plan to achieve Goal Four. In 2012-2013, the full implementation of professional learning communities was recognized as a for-all-by-all initiative at one of our board meetings. With the start of the 2012 school year, a new calendar approved by this board guaranteed that all educators would have time for monthly collaboration. Since then, schools have worked to be creative, to schedule additional time for school-based collaborative learning teams. To help guide these collaborative efforts, it's a little wordy, but you'll get a copy right in front of you very shortly. It's a little bit easier to read than the one that you'll get. To help lead and guide those collaborative efforts, Parkway agreements were created by that Professional Learning Action Team and approved for use in the 2012-2013 school year. Yet, in order to achieve and maintain a high level of implementation, PLC planning, just like anything else, must be successful ongoing development for our administrators and teachers. And that's why you'll hear about our teacher institutes each year that focus on aspects of the professional learning communities. In addition to those institutes, teacher leaders of collaborative teams and multi-school PLCs receive monthly development from instructional coaches, math facilitators, progress monitoring coaches, and administrative team. Work and development, Parkway, through the work, internally, work and development, Parkway has presented its plan and the journey to a school board conference, Missouri School Board Conference in the fall of 2013, and more recently, in Nashville, Tennessee, at the National Learning Forward Conference in December of 2014. We have a great story to tell as we go through, but it is not without our challenges. So, I wish to share a couple of those challenges that we'll still see. And I think that part of what you'll be doing tonight is observing some PLCs in action. And it wasn't a staged PLC in action. So, it was some recordings that, I don't think Derek's here tonight, but I wanted to thank Derek Duncan for his help and assistance to get around to our schools. And so, you'll be able to watch some of that. But some of those challenges include the time, finding those times and structures and places to do it, the multiple school PLCs, in other words, courses that aren't, maybe one teacher teaches at one school, getting those opportunities to collaborate, continuing to build the capacity and the collective responsibility that comes with a professional learning community. But we have to do this through our actions and keeping for those in mind every time we're looking at things. So, that's what we're going to have you do here in just a second. So, when you see these videos, and Liz is going to give you, along with these videos that you watch in your activity tonight, we're working on engagement strategies and some teaching skills. So, Liz is going to demonstrate also some of these high-quality instructional engagement techniques as well. So, I think part of that's going to be making sure that everybody has a part in tonight's activity. Or everybody needs to be on their toes. So, as part of her instructional techniques. So, we do believe that the professional learning communities and the collaborative team is really, really, really a high-leverage action in our efforts to achieve mission. So, without going on any further, I'm going to turn it over. And you ready to go over the instructions? All right, here we go.
Good evening, everyone. What you have in front of you are the Parkway agreements in action. And if you take a look on one side of it, but the first one was the agreements and the rationale. So, the Professional Learning Action Team came up with the agreements and the rationale first because we wanted to start with the why. Why are we doing this? That's on one side. The second part came out a year later, and that's the one I really want you to focus on this evening, the Parkway agreements in actions. A critical, this has got like lots of text on here. And I believe my reading glasses aren't quite as strong as I need them to be. But if you take a look on the column that says the agreements in action, the very fine print under there, it reads the agreements in action are a list of what may be seen in a CLT meeting demonstrating the agreements in action. A team would not be engaged in all of these, but if they're not engaged in any of these, that would be a problem. Okay? So, our plan tonight, I want to walk away from the microphone, but I know I can't do that. Our plan tonight is to have you look at... The plan is to have you guys watch a video. And then, you're going to take a look at our agreements in action. And then, you're going to try to figure out from that, what did you actually see happening in this short, two-minute clip? Then, you're going to talk about it with the partner. And then, I'm going to use a couple of culture-responsive teaching strategies, which are called no opt-out, which means everybody has to be prepared to answer. And we'll use those to have you guys share out your information. I know you're like, yes, thank you, Liz. This is going to be awesome. All right, so, look at the excitement. I am very excited. And I'm sorry I didn't bring any popcorn. I heard that was last time. I was going to read chocolate, but I ate it. No, just kidding. Exactly with the coffee. Okay, so, I'm not sure, CJ, do I press this to... Okay, you ready, you guys?
Is it working? Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. So, take a look at those agreement in actions. And then, I'm going to ask that you turn to someone sitting next to you and discuss this, okay? So, Tom and Kim, if you could partner up, and Debbie and Dee, and Beth and Chris, and Sam. And Dr. Marty, if you guys could please just talk about this and see if you can pull out a couple of the things that you saw happening from our actions. About 30 more seconds? Okay, in five, four, three, two, one. Did everybody find something that they could talk about that they saw from the actions? Yeah? Okay. We're good? You're confident, everybody? Okay, because we're just going to pull a stick. All right, so, Desi is going to pull the stick for me. There you go. And who's got it?
Dr. Sorentino.
All right. Dr. Sorentino, what was one thing that you saw that happened from the agreements in action?
The team utilizes their SMART goals to drive their decisions.
Great, thank you very much. All right, let's do one more.
Beth Feldman.
Ms. Feldman?
The team members are working toward a common goal. And I'd say in this particular case, the goal was bringing up the scores of the African-American students.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, that was our first video. That was South High, if you didn't see it, South High Algebra I team. And that was just, we just went and videotaped them at work, and they knew about it the night before. So, that's probably what you would see if you were to go into their meeting the next Late Start Day, working on their goals. So, we're going to take a look now at a middle school PLC. And you guys, the way this is set up on your document, the first part is like how teams work together. Then, after that, I believe it follows, the next one is about are we focusing on the questions of a collaborative team, which are the five questions, which is the next one, then designing SMART goals. Then, we have are we using common formative assessments or assessments together, being data-driven, and providing evidence of the work in progress. So, those are kind of the overarching parts of what happens in a PLC. And then, off to the sides, you're kind of like, oh, here's what you could be seeing that actually shows that people are talking about SMART goals, or something like that. Okay? I hope I'm going the right way. Whoops. All right, this is a middle school.
Amy, when we were pulling books, she was talking to us about the power of having the kids pick their own topic.
That's what we were talking about yesterday.
We were almost talking about like doing an immersion into just the topic, and then almost doing a KWL chart where, okay, what do you already know about this topic? What do you want to learn? So, then, it's more student-directed, where they're kind of picking it a little bit more so that they have more interest in the unit.
And then, we can kind of gauge, because I mean, I was wondering, my premonition is that, you know, I plan on just doing this giant mind map up there of, okay, Bold War II, what do we already know? Those sorts of things. And then, as we get into the unit, probably like next week, what are you most interested in learning about? Probably going to say the whole class. So, that's great. Like, that'll kind of help focus cat's ears a little bit.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. I remember, about the writing.
Yes, so, after looking at this book too and thinking if part of our goal, after they're able to identify all these things as a reader, is to produce something that shares knowledge, then it would be cool. We've done this in the past, for groups to share their knowledge in a way that demonstrates they have these skills as a writer on like a Wiki or like some sort of class document where they're, or textbooks about contributing their information, making a decision about the text structures that they use, the types of evidence that they use, where their viewpoint is embedded, their use of text features. But it wouldn't have to be Google, was it?
Okay. So, taking a look at your document, what was this particular PLC working on at this time? And go ahead and talk with your partner. You don't have to do this alone. Are we good? Do we have, do we think we have something we can share? Yes, thumbs up? All right, so, for this culture-responsive teaching strategy, it's another no opt-out strategy. And on this one, you roll the dice. And so, here's how we do this. Tom's number one, Kim's number two, Deborah's number three, four, five, six, one, two. Okay? So, if it lands on your number, you're the person who's going to be responding. Does everyone feel like they have an answer? Everyone's confident? I know, it could happen. Let's see, this one lights, oh, sorry. It lights up and everything is my favorite. Oh, number two, Kim.
I mean, I have a simple answer. I felt that everyone was engaged in this one. I mean, they were all talking about what worked for them and everything, so.
Thank you very much. And then, I think I had another number two, Dr. Marty? Yeah?
Yes, they spent some time, I think, really wanting to make sure that everybody understood what students were to understand. So, the first question of the five critical questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so, we've seen high school, we've seen middle school ELA, and we're going to bring it on home with an elementary group. Okay? There they are. I'm like, where'd they go?
Do you already put them on the computer?
Yes. Are you ready?
Yeah.
I wonder what yours did.
Well, I just, I wanted to make a change. We could probably highlight the ones.
And just take off the initial formatting. Maybe.
We did Septembers, and then this is Octembers.
And then...
So, last month, we did below the pretend that this is...
So, last month, we did below the pretend that this is yellow. I'll have to make a new one.
We decided, last time, we marked all of the kids below grade level and the interventions they were receiving. And then today, we were going to talk about anyone below grade level who is not receiving an intervention.
Which is just mine.
This one here?
Yeah.
And we brought him up.
And we brought him up to problem solving.
Where we, last week, when it was CLT leaders, we looked at that risk analysis. I don't know if you guys got a chance, but that would be another data point, that anybody that's in the red, if they're in the red and we don't have an intervention, we need to get one. Make sure that we have one in place. Okay? We got that.
So, there's yellow on the side and red.
It's a completely different document.
Exactly, a different document.
No. Oh, it's a different document.
A different document, now that the district is allowing us to hold, has like multiple data.
So, you guys, what you were seeing there, if you haven't seen, they were doing, moving their data for their reading levels. It was first grade. And what they had up on their SMARTboard, they take pictures of it, and then they put it up on the SMARTboard so they can see how the kids moved from one time to the next, when they're checking on their reading levels. Okay? So, about 30 seconds to see if you can find anything on our agreements in action that goes with this video. Good. Ready? Okay. Ready? Last one? Good? Yeah? Okay. So, the strategy we're going to use on this one is a cold call, and basically, it's where the teacher just calls on whoever they want, and it's a no opt-out strategy. So, hopefully, everyone feels very confident about how they're doing, especially Tom, who's going to tell us what he saw.
What was the question? Well, I thought the one thing that really kind of jumped out was that the, that they used the results of the assessment to determine differentiation and changes in teaching practices. That was something that really kind of jumped out at me. And then that the assessments were charted and displayed.
Great, thank you very much.
To monitor growth.
Thank you. Okay, this is the last. Anybody would like to share anything else that they saw?
In every group, they were all being very respectful and listening to each other, I felt.
Thanks. Anything else? Using data? Yeah, thanks. Anything else?
Results are charted and displayed, visible to all, to monitor student growth.
Thank you.
Don't pull the dog's tail.
I didn't see it. Anything else? All right, so, we hope that this would kind of give you a, kind of an inside look. And I know that you've been around to our PLCs in action, but we felt like this would be an opportunity to kind of dig a little bit deeper and see what we're doing, because as a group, we agreed this was better for our kids, and we believe that it's going to help us achieve all. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Desi.
Thank you, Liz. Now, I feel like I have to walk around with the microphone, too.
I know.
But I think overall, what you see is that genuine collaboration and effort, and those you could hear, in that last video, you could hear if a kid wasn't at a certain level, we needed an intervention, you heard the team saying, "We need an intervention, and we need it now." And that's when they were talking about the kid. They had them color-coded and mentioned, "If you see a kid in red, we need to come up with an intervention." And so, that's that whole question about how are we going to respond? And so, we really wanted to use some of those as an example of all, that, you know, you'll notice you didn't hear a lot of, "Yeah, but this," or there weren't, there's not a lot of excuse-making in, when the collaborative teams, that it took. And also, what maybe didn't get mentioned, but was that collaborative effort and that collective responsibility, that you didn't say, you didn't hear this in my class, or that, that was, those are grade levels, looking at all student data. So, I think one of the big things that has changed just in education over the years is that collaboration, and I think it's a great thing. Sometimes I joke about, you know, that, I know when I started, the collaboration was, well, what are you, what novel are you teaching? Or maybe, what, you know, when are you going to cover the five-paragraph essay? Or you might have found something on the copying machine and said, "Can I use that test for..." But it wasn't anything to the level of what our professionals are doing today. And I don't want to, is it making a difference? Yes, because we're tracking and monitoring the student achievement. And so, at the end result, that's what we want to see, as student results. But is it, is it easy? No. So, teachers will report that, you know, many, many unsolicited say, "This is great development. We want more time. That's probably the biggest challenge that I hear. We would like more time to do this. It's difficult, but we wouldn't do it any other way, besides working together and collaborating." So, those are some of the things you'll hear when you talk to the teachers. But I'm really proud of the work that people are doing and the efforts they're making and struggling through this. There were times when you could have, when we started this, and people would say, "We're already doing that, though. We're already do..." And then when they really learned, and through these agreements, they found out that maybe they weren't doing it to the level that we needed to. But an incredible work ethic and incredible commitment from our teachers and from our, from our support staff and from our administrators to just do everything they can to make these efforts work. We've got work to do. So, I don't want to pretend like we're there. It's still going to stay a goal in our strategic plan. We need to continue, like I said earlier, to guarantee that it's systemic. And so, we've got pockets of excellence, pockets of growth. There are people in different stages all throughout the district, but everybody's, I think, spirit of collaboration and heart is in the work. So, at this time, we'll take, and in the spirit of collaboration, anyone can come down and ask, or answer any questions they'd like.
Questions that you would like explanation on in the video that you observed?
It's our second year? Third. I couldn't remember. It time flies. Yeah. It's amazing, the growth in this. And what really does stick out is how the teachers have, they really have to trust one another and not be afraid to, you know, throw things out there. And it's just great, and I hope we keep down this path.
For example, that last group where you saw the, in essence, a data wall or a data piece, you wouldn't necessarily have seen that the first year, but people are learning that that's ways that they can enhance their data record-keeping. And those, by the way, aren't up there all the time, but for these meetings, and then are put away, so they're not on display, so, because there's some pretty private data there, actually, for the teachers to use during those meetings. But I think we're seeing more of that. I saw just last week, I was out and about, and I saw two different groups using that method of having some ongoing way of to keep track of their growth, and they're using colors, and there's different ways of doing that. There's no one recipe. So, I think we're seeing more of that type of growth in terms of teachers feeling comfortable with kind of doing their own record-keeping or very visual kind of displays.
Yeah, and while there is development in protocols for developing those data walls, and our instructional coaches are really receive a high-level development, teacher teams also are, you know, coming up with different creative ways to create these visuals, because once they, it's something different when you look at a spreadsheet, or you look at a list of score, but when you see it up there in front of everybody and can take a step back, it really has more meaning.
How are different groups at different schools sharing what works for them?
That's your leader's group.
Yes, so predominantly, that comes through our, the work of our instructional coaches working together when we talk about what's happening at their schools, as far as the work of their collaborative learning team. So, they're sharing at that level to take it back to their schools. There's Google Docs and forms and those kind of things, but for actual sharing of the work, it's predominantly been through the instructional coaches. It's a little bit harder at the high school, because we don't have instructional coaches for that sharing piece. Our MSPLCs, they share all of their stuff with me, with their coordinators, and with each other, so it's a little bit more transparent, I think, than some of our other groups. And then at PPLCI, there's always time for sharing between the team. The Parkwood Professional Learning Community Institute, because it was a really long acronym.
I was really intrigued with how they were using the SMARTboard to pull up past data and then compare it to real time to see if, you know, if you find out much quicker, do I need to make some changes, or identify and work with kids that maybe are a little bit behind.
And another thing, what that does, too, it also allows them to recognize the progress, growth, and celebrate their successes. Sometimes that's, sometimes our teams are working so hard, you know, it's, when I'll be out walking around, they'll talk about, they're down to business, sometimes it's a good reminder to say, "Wow, you've really moved some kids along from where they were at the beginning." And you know how much we talk about growth in our data, so.
Yeah, what we missed on the video, the elementary teachers, it was kind of funny. They had moved, one of the teachers, all the kids had moved up, and these two kids were lower, and then they go, "Oh, my God, that's great." And then they're like, "Well, what do we do about these kids?" I mean, it was like they took this like 30 seconds, not even celebration, because they have more work to do, so it was pretty cool, so.
Because I have not been able to go to PLCs and see them in action, so I thought this was very helpful. And I guess my question, not to undersurpass my reputation, is to, what, is there a plan to push this out once more to parents, or how frequently? Because I think some of us get questions about, why do we have to have late start days every month? And I think if we could remind them or get this information to them so that they can be reminded about what we're doing, what's happening, and the success of it, that that could help to keep this fresh so that we get that communication out to the parents.
You know what? I think that's a great point, actually, because I think we remind people that we have these days, but I don't think we remind them the work that's occurring to help their kids. And I think that's a great point. I think it's revisiting the great work that our communications department put from the onset, because we do have part of your archives, you'll have the frequently asked questions and the highly publicized from the push from the beginning, but it's a great time to do a reminder.
Yeah.
And new families, as they come into the district, if they're not aware of this, or the reason why we have it, it could be helpful to them.
Very good, good suggestion.
I'm not sure when these, when this taping occurred. It could have occurred on those late start, but these meetings are going on continuously, so it's not just on those late ends. That's where they can go deeper and further, and that's when I, I'm hearing that's where teachers can perhaps do some development or new assessments, or they can, they really got the time in those two hours to really go much deeper, and that's where they really appreciate that. Because oftentimes, these meetings during a school day may be half hour, 45 minutes. They can do good work, but they can't get to the real depthness that they can in that time.
When we first started out, it seemed like some of our grade-level teams or subject-matter teams within a high school or whatever, we're on the road already. And then our multi-school, for instance, our elementary art teachers or middle-school business teachers, whatever, they had a lot of catching up to do. So, here we are in year three. How are they doing?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I have to say, each group is uniquely where they are. We've seen huge growth, though probably the most growth has been our MSPLCs from the first year to now. They don't have as much time as the other groups, so they're not nearly as far along. And I think they feel like they wish they had more time, they'd like to get together more. Some of our groups are earning district and service credit because they're meeting outside of the school day via like Google Hangout to get together more often so they can do that work. So, we've got, they're growing, and we're growing at different places, even like within a school, they might have like a super-high-functioning team, a middle-functioning team. By meaning that is that the work, they don't know what the work is supposed to be sometimes, or they have a whole new team that started during the school year, so they have to bring that team together. So, there's just challenges every year to make, to help everyone move along. But what I love about the journey is that it never ends. And so, each, my team this year might be like here, but then next year, we get three new members, and we go here, but we know that we're going to keep going. And so, every year, it kind of changes, so that sort of, okay. So, yeah, I don't have, like, everyone's at this point, but everyone's moving forward.
So, the other question I had, and I can relate it to the question, instead of saying, "How will we respond when students do not understand?", how will we respond when teachers don't buy in?
We call Amy Joyce. And there's something, no. No, really, there's, part of it is, it is working with people. I mean, you know, we're in the business that, when you're going to collaborate, and sometimes that's, that is a challenge. There's, so there's no question about it. And so, really, we really try to work to get that person to buy in. And honestly, I think the question itself is really difficult to answer, because there isn't a formula for that, and it's different each time. And sometimes, I think they just have to recognize, we have to try to get them to recognize the value of what they do and the kid, student outcomes because of it. The other thing is, it's probably less about what, like, we do administratively. A lot of times, it's because of that collective responsibility on how we help the team respond and work together and coach them through those difficult times, that may even be more important. Just an example of that, not buying in, but major buy-in, sometimes you all will hear about people not having planned time or not getting, and some of that is because they're so into the work they're doing, that they commit, you know, you have this 30-minute period where you're designed to work together, but some of the teams are at a point where they're, they like, feel like, I can't, you know, I know this time could be my own time, but there's a kind of a, that collective responsibility. So, the power of the peers is probably the best answer I could give to help coach those peers, how to get, how to be the collaborative team leader. The other thing we are working on, too, with the instructional coaches and with the help of the development through John Barrow's work and Carter Snow, I was at a progress monitoring meeting yesterday, and they talked about training people on observing those kind of things and then giving coaching techniques back in. So, in other words, they would take, Liz might be trained in one school, so it's not even her school, so it's less evaluative, and it's coming in and giving feedback on what you observe through that team. So, those are some of the techniques we're working on. And then if that doesn't work, we call Amy Joyce.
For instance, in the high schools where you don't have instructional coaches, the progress monitoring coaches, can they kind of play part of that role?
They do play part of, they're actually a lot of part of the development that happens with the instructional coach on a different level. They receive development as well as progress monitoring coaches. But we also rely on our department leaders, and we also, so the internal structures within that school system. And then each collaborative team that's meeting has what they call CLT leader, so the collaborative team leader within that structure itself. So, all those folks are receiving additional development.
And Beth, part of our original plan was to go ongoing development for all of our CLT leaders. So, it's a little bit easier at the elementary school, because they do have the instructional coaches who work with the principals to really work on that development. At our high school level, it's usually the, oh, I'm sorry.
It's usually the principal working with, we have a district coach who works with our new teacher. A lot of times, they also help with the development for the PLC leaders. So, they have systems in place at all those to help our leaders move forward. But to your point about how do you get buy-in, I want people to own it. And it's hard. Ownership is hard. And how do we get people who, to see that this really does help kids? Because it's a big change from how, when I was in the classroom, the practice has totally changed, like Desi was saying. We didn't really collaborate like that. And so, this is a whole different, different ballgame. And it used to be just about my kids and my American history class, but it's really about all the kids in American history class. And changing that mindset is a challenge. I mean, it is hard work. And I think when people first saw this, they thought, "Well, this will be kind of cool. We're working on our buildings, we're not going to the development day, it's going to be awesome." And what they found out, they're working a lot harder, though they're working smarter. And so, that's, it's hard work. And so, that's why we aren't reevaluating the whole system until five years, because it is hard work, and we want people to really be invested in it. Hopefully, we can get everyone to like really own it for all of our kids, so.
Just another, just that all factor, I was talking with a group just the other day, and some changes in education, as we both referenced when we started. And the, one of the major differences, and why it is so much hard, it was so much easier when I first started, because there was actually an expectation that so many kids would fail, that there would be a curve, and we knew. So, the responsibility for all wasn't even talked about. It was kind of like, kind of, where did your, where did your curve fall, and how many kids failed? So, that was the question. And so, that has really changed the mindset.
No, you fail them.
They do it again and again, or they quit.
One of the things that, and I'm not sure if any of those examples, I'm really pleased, and we heard today, actually, at some data meetings, that our SSD staff is very involved in the PLCs. In fact, when I'm at a elementary school, or any level, but particularly in order to an elementary level, I may walk in and... any level, but particularly in order at an elementary level, I may walk in and assume I'm gonna see three or four teachers at grade level, and I'm actually seeing seven teachers, maybe it's some other professionals. So they have really, they've really come to the table. And that's, we've seen and heard today from some of the principals, that that's really been a pleasure. Again, you know, some, some levels and some grades, and the content areas may be farther along in that integration, but, but it's really noticeable.
So, so how do they use this document?
Basically, we send that, I'm so sorry. Basically, we send that out to our, the leaders get it at every PPLCI. And then every month, I send out like a PLC leader newsletter that always has those attached at the bottom. But I have to say, I was at a meeting, and someone's like, this is a great document, I've never seen it before. So, I'm like, okay. So, we just keep bringing it up. The plat reps are the ones who designed it, and we just, you know, keep, you know, bringing it out in the open, here it is, here it is. And, you know, hopefully, it'll eventually just, really, people will be like, oh yeah, I have seen this before, so.
To Liz's point, we, we have to, there are continuous reminders, even at the beginning of this year, at our back-to-school assistant principal-principal meetings, we revisited, and they said, oh, I forgot about that. That would have been helpful in, in guiding some conversations, to get people back on track.
Reality checks some, from time to time, to say, okay, you know, what did we accomplish within these agreements? Which ones did we actually achieve some decision, or some discussion, or some result?
And that's part of the, that document's part of what guides the observation, where we'll have people coming in to be able to provide feedback.
Now, at the middle school, is teaming every day?
The teaming, now I've gotta think about this. They have an opportunity to team, so they have two planning periods, in most cases. So they'll have teaming, and then they'll, they'll, they'll work out their schedule. So some will be for teaming, for that team of five teachers, and then other opportunities for alike content area collaboration. So that'll be set by the school schedule.
Yeah. So in essence, they really have more time to collaborate in a PLC kind of
I think they have a better setup structurally, to be able to have more opportunities.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you both very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for doing my no-op down scratch, just to.
Okay, we're gonna have our math folks come on down. Jenny Profit, Dr. Becky Litherland, let's see, Toby McQuerry, Susan Erby. I missed anybody? One, two, three, four. Okay.
Desi and Liz are a tough act to follow. We were just kinda kicking ourselves as a team, thinking, boy, we didn't bring videos, we didn't bring dice, we didn't bring food, as some have done in the past. So, we apologize in advance. We'll know next time. President Feldman, Vice President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Marty Miss Stover, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here this evening to share with you the main findings and recommendations from the Parkway Mathematics Program Evaluation. This evaluation was the first one in a core subject area to be conducted under the new TLA structure. This has been a collaborative process among the three levels, and it's been an interesting, it's been interesting to learn about common strengths and areas for growth in the K-12 program. Tonight, we will first provide you with the main topics and questions that guided the entire evaluation process. We will then proceed with sharing the academic achievement and main findings for each level, and then conclude with the K-12 and any level-specific recommendations. For all three levels, committees of teachers, administrators, and parents were asked for input regarding the main areas of focus for the math program evaluation. Additionally, they were asked to assist in the development of guiding questions. As a result of the process, and as illustrated by the graphic here, the main topics that we studied were mission and vision, curriculum, instructional practices, assessment, and resources. For mission and vision, the question was simple. Does the Parkway Mathematics Program contribute to the accomplishment of mission and vision? In the area of curriculum, the primary guiding questions revolved around alignment and articulation of the curriculum, as well as the level of relevance and rigor. For instructional practices, we were trying to determine whether students were being appropriately challenged and supported, whether teachers felt confident in their abilities to meet the needs of all students, and whether our current structures allow for maximum student achievement. In regard to the topic of assessment, the focus was on the impact of assessment on instructional decision-making, the alignment of the assessments to critical mathematical areas, and the adequacy of the information of our current assessment system. Finally, in the area of resources, the committee wanted to know if our current resources are adequate and effective. More than half of all the respondents agreed, or strongly agreed, that the K-12 math program is contributing to the accomplishment of most aspects of the mission, with some perceived as being more impacted than others. For example, while 70% or more of teachers and administrators agree that the program contributes to the development of capable learners, just over half agree that students are being fully prepared for their next educational challenges. Students, on the other hand, reported that they generally feel as if they will be ready for math next year. A high percentage also reported that they felt confident in their mathematical abilities and in their ability to solve problems. As we move into the elementary specific portion of the report, Susan Erby will start us off with a look at the elementary achievement data.
At the elementary level, another indicator of whether we are accomplishing our mission, especially as it relates to the development of capable students, is our student achievement data. Tonight, I will share with you performance data on the elementary mathematics MAP assessment, including overall elementary achievement data, grade-level performance data, and subgroup achievement data. The graph you see here illustrates the overall elementary mathematics performance from 2011 to 2014, as compared to the state performance during that same time period. As seen on the graph, over the course of a four-year span, the average MPI in Parkway has increased slightly, while the state MPI has decreased slightly. And overall, Parkway has outperformed the state since 2011. When looking at the grade-level data, you can see that there has been an overall increase in MPI scores in both third and fifth grades since 2011, but the four-year trend shows a decrease in our fourth-grade scores. Additionally, fifth grade has consistently performed at higher levels when compared to third and fourth grades over the past four years. This graph is an illustration of MPI levels of students not in the subgroup compared to those students who are in the subgroup. While both categories of students have shown growth since 2011, the gap between these two groups has increased. In 2011, there was a 59-point difference between the two categories, but by 2014, this differential had increased to almost 64 points. Within the subgroup, there's a significant gap between the performance of black students as compared to white students. While both student groups have seen an increase in overall achievement, the white students are growing at a faster rate than our black students. Toby's now going to talk some about the findings of our first main topic, which was curriculum.
An effective curricular path is one that builds skill, knowledge, and conceptual understanding from year to year. To best support students throughout their educational journey, it's critical that all stakeholders are aware of and understand this path. To help determine if the elementary math program is aligned and clearly communicated, questions were asked about prior knowledge and skill of students, clarity of scope and sequence, and clarity of the online curriculum guide. The results indicated that just under half of teachers and just over half of administrators agree that the curricular scope and sequence in mathematics is clear and makes sense from one grade level to the next. While these responses indicate that the progression of learning across grade levels in the elementary math program is not clear, clarity within each grade level appears to be strong, with a large majority of teachers and administrators stating that they agree, or strongly agree, that the outcomes for student learning are clearly articulated in stage one of the math units for each grade level. To determine the degree in which the elementary program provides a rigorous learning experience, teachers, administrators, and parents were asked about the level of challenge provided by the math program, and the level of confidence that the stakeholder groups had in students' abilities to engage in the habits of mind of mathematicians. While a large percentage of administrators agree that students are challenged in a positive and meaningful way in math, just under half of teachers and parents agree. In addition, less than half of respondents in all three stakeholder groups felt that the elementary math curriculum did not provide enough support for teachers to be able to tap into the interests of students. Susan will now discuss the remaining three topics, instructional practices, assessment, and resources.
Do teachers feel confident? More than half of elementary school teachers who responded indicated that they feel very or extremely confident in their abilities to develop students' mathematical habits of mind, also known as the standards for mathematical practice. When factoring in the percentage that also felt moderately confident in their own abilities, the level, the level of confidence felt by teachers rises above 80%. For both teachers and administrators, confidence was the lowest in the practice of differentiating instruction to meet the needs of all students. Survey responses indicated that teachers did not feel confident in their ability to differentiate the core curriculum, or tier one, to meet the needs of all kids. Survey data also indicated that all stakeholders agreed that our current structures and resources do not meet the needs of students who are in need of more intensive tier-two and tier-three interventions. This feeling is consistent with other responses throughout the surveys, and will have to be a high priority for the Parkway Math Program if we're going to truly facilitate maximum student achievement for all students. While teachers and administrators agree that the Parkway Mathematics Benchmark Assessments target critical areas for student learning, as well as critical areas on state assessments, they do not believe that the benchmarks are sufficient in helping them to understand and respond to the mathematical needs of students. A pattern that has been prevalent throughout this evaluation is that teachers and administrators do not feel as if they have adequate resources to help identify root causes of academic difficulties among students, or that they have the adequate tools needed to monitor student progress in math. And finally, we wanted to determine the degree in which our current resources support math teaching and learning. In regards to our current main resource, investigations, only about half of teachers responded that they agree that this resource helps their students understand math. The main concern over the resource, as reflected in the comments, is the lack of alignment between the resource and stage one of the Parkway Math Curriculum. This misalignment is due to the fact that the series was written prior to the adoption of the Missouri Learning Standards, which resulted in some content and learning expectations being shifted to new grade levels. The survey responses indicated that there's widespread agreement that there are not sufficient resources available for math intervention or math enrichment. Only 12% of teachers and administrators agreed that appropriate math intervention resources are available, and less than 20% agree that there are appropriate enrichment resources. Again, comments indicated a desire for the development of an intervention program similar to what is currently available for reading in the Parkway Elementary Schools. We will now move into the middle school portion of the report, and I'm going to turn over to Becky.
In the middle school mathematics program, achievement data is also an indicator of the degree to which we're preparing confident and capable learners. The data shown in this graph illustrates the MPI scores for all middle schools by grade level from 2011 to 2014. The large drop in eighth grade is due to the fact that prior to that year, all eighth-grade students took the MAP. In 2013, the algebra students only took the EOC. This dramatically changed the population of students taking the, the MAP. It is encouraging to see that the eighth-grade scores are moving back up. The second graph illustrates the percent of students scoring proficient and advanced on the MAP compared with the state from 2009 to 2014. All three grades score more than 10 points above the state every year. This graph illustrates the overall MPI scores for each middle school compared to the state. The state target score is 392, and it represents the expectations for Missouri schools by 2020. You can see on the graph that three of our schools are already above the state target. This graph shows a comparison of MPI levels of students not in the gap group to those in the gap group. Students in the gap group have shown gains in seventh grade since 2012, and a decline in sixth grade since 2013. Eighth-grade students in both groups showed a similar pattern with the large drop of 2013. Overall, however, the data indicates that the achievement gap has not decreased. This graph provides a visual representation of both MAP achievement level on the y-axis, and growth on the x-axis, for each middle school in Parkway. The graph places schools in one of four quadrants based on achievement and growth. The target graph on the y-axis is 392, the expected MPI score set by the state. As illustrated by the graph, sixth grade does not show growth at any school, and six of the 15 groups do achieve above the state target. Approximately 16% of Parkway's eighth-grade students take Algebra I, and are therefore taking the Algebra EOC assessment. The graph presents the percent of middle school students scoring proficient and advanced on the Algebra EOC. Between 2009 and 2013, the percent was above 90% for all schools. In 2014, 100% of all middle school Algebra I students were proficient or advanced on the EOC. The data related to the curriculum from middle school stakeholders shows that 86% of the teachers agree that outcomes for student learning are clearly outlined on the OCG, while only 53% feel the curricular scope and sequence is clearly articulated. Three-fourths of the teachers and 50% of the parents do not feel students arrive in middle school with the prior knowledge and skills required for success. Yet, 79% of the students feel prepared for the class that they are taking. It's apparent there's a need to review the progression of skills and establish communication among teachers at the different levels. With regard to the rigor, 70% of the teachers and 62% of the students feel the curriculum provides a challenge. However, only 50% of the parents and administrators agree. The feedback on relevance shows a gap between teachers and students' perceptions of making connections between math content and real-world applications. Only 39% of the teachers feel they're making these connections, yet 62% of the students report they see applications of their math to real life. With the goal of learning for all in mind, middle school math teachers are committed to meet the needs of their students. 74% report using differentiation strategies, and 50% indicate they are able to provide students with sufficient interventions. However, only 22% feel there are sufficient building structures in place for intervention and enrichment. Only 33% of the teachers agreed they are confident in their use of best practices in teaching mathematics, and they show low confidence in students' abilities to demonstrate math practices. At our initial session for the math program evaluation, we were asked specific questions about the use of flipped learning in mathematics classrooms. Currently, 19 middle school teachers and 21 high school teachers report using some form of the flipped learning in their practice. Middle school teachers are seeing more positive effects from flipped learning than high school teachers. Teachers perceive parent support to be higher than what was shown on the parent surveys. 63% of the middle school teachers using flipped learning report students show a more positive attitude toward mathematics as compared to only 38% in the high school. Neither level expresses increases in student successes. In analyzing the comments from the surveys from the middle school stakeholders, in the top five strengths, flipped learning was among the top five. And in looking at the areas needing improvement, flipped learning was in the top five. Assessment is an integral part of, the, excuse me, assessment is an integral component of the instructional process. 89% of the teachers reported they use information from formative and district unit assessments to make instructional decisions. A large percentage of the teachers consider state expectations when planning instruction, but a lower percent use information from the state assessments to make instructional decisions. This discrepancy could be a result of the revision of the Parkway curriculum to align with new Missouri learning standards, while the state test is still aligned to the Missouri GLEES. The 2015 assessments will reflect alignment with the Missouri Learning Standards. The area of instructional resources is one where teachers have great concern. Only 15% feel they have adequate resources provided by Parkway to support daily instruction, while no middle school teachers agree we have sufficient resources for parent use or for intervention or enrichment. When the curriculum was developed to align with the Missouri Learning Standards, there were few resources available that aligned with the curriculum. Selecting and implementing new quality resources is a high priority recommendation from this report. We'll now move into the high school specific portion of the report, and I'll turn the time over to Jenny, who will present this level and the final recommendations for the K-12 math program.
The first graph we will look at for high school is our only state assessment, the Algebra I EOC. This graph shows the percent of students who scored proficient or advanced with the
This graph shows the percent of students who scored proficient or advanced for the last six years, with two thousand twelve scores reflecting the first group of students to take the EOC following the implementation of Algebra for All. Since the introduction of the program, the district has consistently had at least seventy-five percent of high school students score proficient or advanced compared to a state average of about sixty percent. Since two thousand and nine, Central High and South High have made the greatest overall gains. Fern Ridge had a great increase in scores in two thousand fourteen after declines since two thousand eleven, and North High and West High had declines last year. Because of the declines at West High and North High last year, additional Algebra One cohort data was gathered. Using MPI's for both eighth grade Math MAP and ninth grade Algebra One EOCs, we determined that even though West High and North High had negative year-to-year gains, they did show positive growth from eighth to ninth grade. Central High and South High both showed positive year-to-year gains and positive cohort growth. We can break the EOC data down by subgroups. When we do, we see that students who identify as Black or who have an IEP are less likely to score proficient or advanced. Since the introduction of Algebra for All in two thousand eleven, Black and IEP subgroups have not shown further decline. There is still a big gap, but these subgroups have either remained the same or have increased their percentage compared to the years before Algebra for All. Another assessment that we can look at is the District Choice ACT. A math subscore of twenty-two signals preparedness for a college algebra-level course at post-secondary institutions. Since the first year for District Choice, we have had at least fifty percent of students score at the math benchmark. The last piece of assessment data is a look at AP exams. This graph indicates the number of students who took the AP exam, shown with the black vertical line, and gives the percent of those students who scored either a three, four, or five on the exam with the horizontal bar. More than eighty percent of students who took the Statistics or Calculus B-C exam scored three or higher, and more than seventy percent of students who took the Calculus A-B exam scored a three or higher. Just like at the elementary and middle levels, surveys were sent to high school parents, students, teachers, and administrators, and they were questioned about areas related to the main topics and guiding questions. In regards to curriculum, high school surveys results show that there is a gap between what students believe they know and what teachers believe students know. Only thirty-six percent of teachers felt students were prepared when they arrived in their class as compared to at least sixty-five percent of parents and students. In addition, surveys made it quite clear that there is not much relevance in the high school mathematics curriculum. Only forty percent of students reported that they can make connections between what they learn in math and real life. When asked about instructional practices, once again, high school surveys show a gap. This time, the gap represents how teachers perceive instructional time as being utilized compared to students' perception. What the surveys made clear is that there is a need for more class time being used to engage all learners and work on individual needs. This study also determined that, for the most part, students who are struggling are having their needs met. Ninety-seven percent of teachers feel confident in their ability to help students who do not understand, and almost eighty percent of students feel comfortable asking questions of their teacher. However, only seventy percent of teachers report knowing what to do when a student already knows and following that with differentiating instruction. When looking at assessment, once again, surveys show a gap. Over seventy percent of teachers agree that the high school math curriculum is aligned to state and national assessments, while only about sixty percent of parents and students believe that the curriculum prepares them. In addition, only fifty percent of teachers say they use the information from these assessments to make instructional decisions. Just like at the other levels, an area of great need is for more tools to help identify the root causes of academic difficulties in mathematics. Resources are also an issue at the high schools. Although nearly eighty percent of students report being able to locate a resource to help them, parents and teachers feel that more are definitely needed. Moving forward, emphasis needs to be placed on finding resources that assist with intervention and enrichment and that have an emphasis on real-world relevance. At the initial work session, we were asked about the success of the Algebra One program. What we have determined through this evaluation is that there continues to be an unclear answer. Have we seen improvements in achievement on Algebra One EOC scores? Yes. Consistently, we have seventy-five percent or more of our high school students and now a hundred percent of our middle school students scoring proficient or advanced. Subgroup achievement on the EOC has not improved greatly, but neither has declined since the implementation of the program. Last year, the first group of students in the Algebra for All program took the ACT, and results were slightly improved for students scoring at the benchmark for all high schools except for one. When I categorized the comments on the survey, what I found interesting was that Algebra One showed up as one of the top five strengths of our program, but again, it also showed up as one of the top five concerns in our program. So there is no doubt that there are certain aspects of the program that are groundbreaking and impactful and shouldn't be changed, but there are also still a lot of questions and areas that need improvement. The final question that we would like to address from the initial work session is about the new structure of teaching, learning, and accountability and its impact on mathematics teachers. As members of TLA, we strive to be collaborative, supportive, responsive, and innovative, and what we saw in the surveys is that the results around our brand and the new structure are very encouraging. On average, eighty percent of the teachers feel that their coordinator is responsive and supportive, and nearly seventy percent felt that we developed and articulated a shared vision for the mathematics program. So with all that data and results in mind, we have five recommendations for the K-12 mathematics program. The first one is that we need to develop and communicate a progression of learning in mathematics. Surveys show there are gaps in communication and understanding regarding the progression of learning in math. As a result, it is recommended that tools be created so all stakeholders have a deep understanding of the concepts and skills required to adequately prepare students as they move from grade to grade and level to level. Number two, we need to study and implement developmentally appropriate best practices in mathematics instruction. Data show a need for practices beyond whole-class instruction to maximize student engagement and understanding. Moving forward, we will develop and implement professional development, which will have a focus on engagement for all. Flipped learning and additional studies around Algebra One will also be included. Three, we need to develop a systematic approach to intervention and enrichment in mathematics. In order to meet the need of all students, it is recommended that a study be conducted of our current intervention structures, resources, and staffing allocations, and that a district-wide intervention menu that is supplemental to the core be developed. Four, we want to develop a comprehensive assessment system. This recommendation calls for a balanced assessment system that identifies and diagnoses for the purposes of early and ongoing identification of student needs. This tool should include formative assessments and other diagnostic tools that provide specific information regarding student strengths and weaknesses and allow teachers to determine the best path for instruction. Then five, we need to adopt resources that support students, teachers, and parents in and out of school. Over and over again, stakeholders indicated that our current resources do not adequately meet their needs. We will be looking for resources that are aligned to current state standards and the Parkway curriculum. They should have a balance between relevant problem-solving and development of fluency and give options to differentiate to meet the needs of all students while also offering adequate support for parents who would like to assist their students outside of school. With all that, I'd like to bring back up Toby and Susan and Becky, and we welcome your questions.
Some examples of resources that are needed, that are not there.
So at the elementary level, and we've responded starting last spring, was math is nationwide, it's taught differently than what it was the way most of us learned math in school and certainly the way that our parents are currently seeing what their children bring home. And in the PTO meetings that we've attended, what I walk away with from those meetings is parents, when they clear the dishes off the dinner table, they want to know how to help their kids with homework. So one of the things, and many of the publishers either don't provide that or what they provide is inadequate, so we started last spring with our math facilitators creating family letters for each Parkway unit, and that has had overwhelmingly positive support at the elementary level. We've also had videos created, so parents can watch a two-minute quick video of how a strategy is working. But we're also looking, when we adopt a new resource, of what are the digital and print resources? We saw that also, that parents want both access to both print and digital resources that are aligned. Currently, our resources, because they're several years old and the standards have changed, they're just not aligned. So we've had to create our own in-house, which are high-quality, but we also hope that what we're piloting, what we end up bringing as a recommendation for purchase, has a lot of those resources as well.
Just want to make a couple of comments on the middle school level. The middle school teachers over the last three years have been diligently searching for resources, which there's a lot online nowadays, but the textbooks that they had really were not aligned with the curriculum and where they were going, and the approaches that were present in those textbooks were really not appropriate with where we needed to be with adequate instruction. So they've had to search and search and search, and the marketplace of resources, textbooks, whatever, has changed so dramatically in the last three years, with the digital component being just really a major piece of almost anything that you look at now. So it's been a stage of transition for our teachers as well as it has been for the publisher world that we would draw from.
Is there a point that we can reach that we're not going to need a textbook? When is that going to happen? Because it sounds like that's our biggest frustration, one of our biggest frustrations.
Yeah, I don't know at the elementary level whether we will reach that point. Part of the problem is that if you look at a lot of the math textbooks, whether they be digital or print, a lot of it is just problems. And so if I'm a parent and I'm not sure how to work the problem, and my child is bringing home problems to work, but there's no, you know, context for how to work the problem, that's not helpful. And so that's when we have had to start supplementing. So what we're noticing with the current publishers that we have been reviewing and that we're piloting, they have, I probably felt that nationwide response, that's a frustration nationwide, you can follow it on social media, is I don't know how to help my kid with their homework. We've noticed that there's more context in those textbooks, so there's a lot more parental help. So I think they wised up and thought, no one's going to buy our products if we don't start being more responsive.
And then as to textbooks, I think that's why we talked about resources, because in math, we always want to be able to provide our kids with practice, and so wherever that practice is coming from, it has to be created by someone or something. So whether it's teachers who are creating it and putting it on Google or something like that, we're always going to need that practice for the kids in math.
Students that are failing Algebra One since the new end-of-course exams are, like, they're just not passing anymore because they're not getting it and they can't continue on? I don't even look at those numbers.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I have not really pulled any failure rate data through the course of this study. I can tell you that we have been looking at some systems and structures where kids who are receiving, because we give a lot of I's too, so it's, you know, I would have to look at the difference between I's and things like that, so not that I've looked at, no.
Are we confident that the current curriculum is meeting the needs of our students and what we need? And particularly, when I think of some of those students that are in the gap groups that just aren't moving forward, as much as we're trying, it seems like we're splashing in the water a lot but not seeing much progress.
So I think we're confident, but we're waiting for more to support our confidence. Most of our curriculum, our elementary curriculum, was just realigned, and this is only year two, and the implementation, and our state assessments aren't even aligned to that yet. So I think some of that is that we're waiting for more. I think what we heard over and over again is that the curriculum itself is good, and now we need to focus on the how, the instruction, how to best meet the needs of all of the kids that come to us. So we have a good, we believe, plan of what our outcomes need to be for kids, and now we need to work on the execution and knowing how to differentiate for all, I think, and that's one of our main recommendations for our focus moving forward.
Do teachers pretty much support the curriculum? It seemed like they're...
Yeah.
They felt like they didn't have the resources or the tools.
Right.
And I'm not sure what they mean by more teachers or better tools.
Yes. I think they meant all of that, but what we heard mostly is that within a grade level and the content that a teacher is responsible for, they feel very confident in the curriculum. Where the curriculum needs to be more clear, and I think it's just a better way of communicating, is between grade levels. And so that teachers know, when I have students who come in who aren't on this level yet, how do I know how to help them, and what's the path that they need to follow to get where we need to be? So it's clear to them within their content area, class, or their grade level, but not necessarily clearly articulated K-12.
I think I need to go to a math PLC.
At the high school level, we will be looking at the curriculum again. So for instance, when the Algebra One curriculum, or Algebra for All was introduced, the curriculum was changed, and there hasn't been a systematic approach to now look across the years and say, are we doing what we need to do? Is Algebra Two, are we meeting their needs? Are we meeting the needs in geometry? So that is one of the recommendations, looking at the progression. We will be looking above the years past Algebra One.
See, last week, where one of the pilots, we're piloting two programs, right? And the sense was that one of the pilots, I think it was a group of fourth-grade teachers, were really concerned that the pilot itself was still, our curriculum was more challenging than the actual pilot, and so there's a gap. So I think, I would just reinforce, I think somebody said it, this is not a Parkway, we're not isolated, this is a national, and, you know, we could look at the data and say we're doing really pretty well, state and national, and so be it, but I think, you know, it's sobering, as Chris said, but there's struggles out there, even from textbook companies or the suppliers of resources to really even meet our expectations. Is that fair? I mean, Toby and Susan, you're here.
Yeah, and, you know, speaking of our curriculum, where we have spent most of our time last year and really over the summer, has been Stage One and Stage Two of our curriculum. Stage One, developing the outcomes for student learning, and Stage Two, the assessments. So last year, we had unit assessments for each of our newly-created Stage One. We pulled teams of teachers in over the summer to write benchmark assessments. We've given that first benchmark assessment, they are written at the standard, the level of proficiency, they're end-of-year standards, so students took those at the beginning of the year, sometimes they struggled because it's something that hadn't been taught. And then they've taken the second one, so we'll start to see growth, but the point is where we've spent all of our effort is that in looking at the outcomes and in measuring it, and then our next step is implementing through Stage Three and instructional practices. I had the pleasure of participating in the House Bill fourteen ninety in Jefferson City, those meetings, and several folks were begging me for Parkway's units of instruction, because you can see, the public can see the units, they can see the course descriptions, the unit descriptions, and they were begging me, can you please give me your curriculum? And I gave several of them a peek of our benchmark assessments and unit assessments, just let them peek off my screen, and I am confident that our math facilitators have worked to create assessments that are unmatched in the entire country. They could sell them, we won't let them, but what we have created here, we are very proud of. Once we get to and focus all of our energy on Stage Three, I'm confident that we will be very proud of the outcomes of that as well.
Toby, while you're talking, while you're on the subject of our math facilitators, my question was, can you assess the impact of math facilitators versus our math intervention specialists when we changed over three years ago? And also, the work of our math facilitators being split between buildings, their time in the buildings are diminished, and has that shown a noticeable impact?
I can speak to part of it. I'm not as familiar with the previous program, perhaps Susan or even Dr. Meredith might be able to speak to that. The data did not show that a full-time math facilitator, in terms of student achievement on the MAP test only, made a significant difference in growth or achievement. And actually, Becky showed earlier, four quadrants of schools with graph one point seven in the written report, one point six in the written report, those schools that actually demonstrated highest growth have a split, a part-time math facilitator, one who is split between two schools. I think that what we saw that was most telling and... I think that what we saw that was most telling, and this goes to the job description and the evaluation model for the math facilitator, is that the primary, the bulk of their time is to be spent with teachers. What we saw was something similar in the comments and survey data from teachers, that they felt well-supported from their math facilitator in terms of preparing for learning, helping them better understand the mathematics and instruction and so forth. What we saw from the teachers, if you think about the bulk of their time is not spent with students as it was under the previous model. Teachers, principals, loud and clear, said that they did not feel supported in that area, and that it has nothing to do with the math facilitators, that their focus is to be with teachers under the current model. So when we think about that system of interventions, that's certainly something that we need to research to determine if they are to be reallocated to work with students versus teachers. Well, how would it be different from the prior model so that it is effective? So I don't know if Susan or Lisa, to speak about the difference between the previous one, or?
When we had a math intervention in the past.
The previous model, when before math facilitators worked with teachers primarily, that model was primarily when we intervened in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And the way that that model was set up was that those students actually were not in their math class during that time. Right. And so, you know, they were, it wasn't, what we're trying to move towards is a model of intervention that's about acceleration and that's more targeted. That was basically, kids were out oftentimes an entire year with a math intervention specialist and not returned back into the classroom. And so we're hoping to develop a system of targeted intervention where we can really diagnose what's the underlying root cause, what's the thing that seems to be missing, target that for shorter periods of time, really intensely, and get them right back in, or have that be in addition to their course. Well, right now, we don't know. That's one of the things that we have, and have to think about when we think about, the way that the math facilitator's current job description is written, they are, part of their job description is intervention, supporting students, but the way that it's structured, I think what we found from this report, is that they're not able to do both of those things at high levels, and that's not any fault of their own, it's just how they have to allocate their time.
So let's go back to the question about splitting between schools. So if you had a math facilitator working in one school and splitting his or her time between working with teachers and working with students on quick interventions, is that the better model?
It could, what, we didn't see a difference. We have some schools who have a full-time intervention specialist who also do a significant amount of work with students, and we didn't see significant difference in achievement with that versus the people who are part-time.
You'd be level of growth?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And so we really believe, we just really need to study the position as a whole, as part of our thinking about a systematic approach to assessing and intervening with kids and supporting our teachers. You know, our teachers in elementary are generalist, and so they have to think about, we're finding our best approach is to really think about good instruction across all content areas, and so how can they get support in that? And how can we have enough resource to also intervene with students? I think that needs to be a part of a bigger thing that we look forward and study as we move forward next year.
Is there better achievement in schools where there's departmentalization, where there's a math specialist?
In the elementary level.
In the elementary.
That's a good question. We didn't, we didn't look at data that way. I don't know very many schools that have someone who focuses on math in elementary. Most of the departmentalization you see is in science and social studies. So we didn't, I don't, you don't see it very often.
Is that something that should be considered, to have more of a specialist in math at the elementary level? Or?
It's one of those debates, yeah. It's one of those debates, and there are people who agree and disagree with that philosophy. You know, you lose the, when you have your kids full-time across all subject areas, you get to know them as learners, and then they have that connection with you, and hopefully you can make connections across content areas for them. You know, you give that up when you specialize, so I think that's one of those things that...
Well, I think that's ideal, but at the same time, you know, a lot of elementary teachers, unless they've specialized in math as a minor, or have a high interest and have done well to be able to teach it, I like to just get an idea of how many teachers really know math well enough to teach it at the level that's expected. And if not, then what is a good alternative?
Yeah, we hear over and over again, the level of content knowledge needs to be developed in all subject areas for the elementary teacher, yeah.
No, I totally agree, but it seems like it's more of a crisis in math right now.
Yeah.
And sometimes in science as well.
When we studied science, we heard that loud and clear, but the teachers, the elementary teachers did not feel comfortable. I think science was their least comfortable course content.
And that's not unique to Parkway.
No.
So Dr. Marty, based on what we're saying here, when we talked to the community three years ago, when we were changing the model, and, you know, we said that with the interventions, the kids are pulled out, they fall further and further behind, they'll never catch up at this rate, it's better off if we teach the teachers to be better teachers, and that will benefit all of our students. But we're always going to have kids that need intervention. So I think, from what I'm hearing, some kind of a hybrid model might be a better choice for us than either all student intervention or all teacher facilitation, something in the middle.
Well, I think, first of all, I don't think you're asking for a decision tonight.
No, of course not. No, of course not. But, you know, I think we're always striving to be better, and I think we promised, we promised the parents, when we changed the model, that we would constantly monitor what was happening. So now we've had three years of data, and I think we need to ask the question, is this, are we on the right path?
Well, I like to, I mean, they made some pretty profound recommendations here that I think have more to do with further discussion. For example, this whole idea of progression of learning, and our new structure allows not just one math person, not just like a Jenny here, but the three of them working together on that progression. And then also the ability to really talk about the math engagement, both from a teacher's standpoint. So I'll just say honestly, I think, and not just Parkway, sometimes our quick assumption is we got to do something fast, and we reestablish math facilitators, is that the best decision? I mean, in other words, we start spending money on personnel and we don't think about, because another one of those approaches was a systematic approach. So I think, before we really give a clear definition to our community, I think we got to give these folks, and Lisa and others, the opportunity to really go deeply into some of these recommendations, which you never, you didn't see something here that said, go out and hire a bunch of new facilitators, or, you know, or pick this type of curriculum. I think these are really good recommendations. And when we heard them from the Superintendent's Action Team, we said, wow, this may be the first program evaluation, and I think for all of us, at least since my tenure here, where we have to honestly say, wow, this isn't the best news. Now, we're oftentimes, at the end of these programs, say, wow, we're top of the heap. And I think they did what they were very fair. They were very honest, very fair, and obviously, we asked the right kind of questions, and we didn't necessarily get something that just blows us away here. They recognize, we recognize as leaders, and everybody's got to recognize, this is going to take some time. And I think we got to give them time to look at these recommendations, and to come back to us with short-term things, perhaps we could do, but it's probably going to be longer term in terms of how we...
Well, I think it's a good board retreat topic for our May Retreat, but I think we've got to keep this in front of us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We can't just assume it's going to get fixed.
Right. No, and I'm, believe me, I'm not trying to not be responsible, because I think we have to keep math on the forefront. But those of us who have been around for a while know that probably 15 years ago, we were having the same discussion about English Language Arts, and we were really, you know, really pressed, and I think we've seen great progress there. We're now at this point in math, and probably soon we'll be with science. But we really have some work to do, and I think, as was mentioned, I think we're taking it on. It's not that we're in denial, or that we're trying to do a quick fix. So I think this program evaluation was at the right time, with the right kind of structure, and with people that really took it very seriously.
Okay, so what would we say, besides the five recommendations that you all presented, from a board standpoint, what is our next step? When can we invite this really talented and hard-working group back to give us an update on their recommendations? Oh, there's Lisa. You too. Talented and hardworking.
There she is.
So as part of the program evaluation cycle, they will come back to you in the fall with a plan of how they will respond to the recommendations, both short-term and long-term. So they'll give, actually, and we've changed, it's not a presentation, it's a report that you'll receive, and that will have the new frameworks for the curriculum on it, so it will have the updated standards, the updated outcomes, but then also their timeline for the, how they're going to spend time in the next six years, first two or three years for the development, and then the last four years for implementation and monitoring of that. So that's the next step in this, is for them to come, present to you a plan of what that will look like. I also want to point out that this is, it is the right time that we've done this, but it's also been a delayed time. So the last time math program evaluation happened was 2006, and so we're out of the six-year cycle, we're, you know, eight years. And part of that was because of turnover and tenure of math coordinators. Part of that also was, we were in the process of rewriting curriculum. So it's really, the data is important, we need to look at it, we need to own it, and we need to move forward. But as Toby and Susan shared, and I know for Becky, they just rewrote Stage One over the last couple of years. So the data isn't reflective of the curriculum that's in place now. It's reflective of the curriculum that we have moved out of over the last two years. And so right time, yes, because it's giving us a baseline with the new curriculum, and once we get the new resources. But it is, I think this is certainly going to be a place with data points that we'll continue to monitor at a district level, at Superintendent's Action Teams, and at our assessment, progress, and monitoring team, as well as we look at district data. But, so in the fall, you'll get something.
So we'll get an action plan in the fall, but when do we get to look at the data reflective of the newly-written material that you guys have put forth over the last two years?
So that will be in the plan as well, so when they'll come to you with data. And we have benchmark assessments and growth measures that they'll be collecting data on, and so I think that's something that we'll be able to monitor on a regular, more regular basis than what we have been able to. And even right now, we've had the annual state assessment at elementary in three-grade levels, and middle school, and then at high school in Algebra I. So they talked about a recommendation for a systematic assessment system, so that we can monitor, how do we know that they're, how they're performing before we get bad news in third grade? We need to know that so that that doesn't happen, so that we can respond before that. So that will be in the timeline as well, is when they will present data. And I think as a result of this, we need to bring math data forward to you more frequently than what we have been. So typically, we do a midterm report, but, right, the monitoring of it.
Question that was asked, Lisa, stay there, or maybe anybody, but when we were out in, when we were out in the schools talking about some changes, and we're going through budget and talk about staffing, so here's a key question. Is math performance the same, better, or lower than it was two years ago at elementary? Let's just take elementary.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Based on the math?
Yeah.
See, that's, I was thinking, what data point are you going to look at?
So it's just, it's based on two years, I believe we're just slightly lower than what we were. Based on four years, we're slightly higher than where we were.
But that's, remember, that's based on state assessment that has not been aligned the last two years to the curriculum we've been implementing. The curriculum we've been implementing is actually more rigorous than what was, and I remember even back in ELA days, whenever we first moved to the map, we looked at our data, and our students were doing well on higher DOK level questions than what they were on the low DOK levels, and we learned that kids were breezing through them because they thought they knew them and they weren't double-checking. And I think we're seeing a little bit of that as well in math, if we look at some of the...
And would it be fair to say that in the last couple of years, math assessments, both our own developed assessments plus state, is really much more focused on reading? I mean, there's more challenge, it's not the same old assessments the last 10 years, it's certainly got much more focus.
Certainly more focus on reading, and also more focus on transfer to unique situations and problems, as opposed to just rote problems. You know, I remember in my elementary, middle school, even high school days, just pages and pages of problems out of context. And now the students are given a context, and they have to figure out what mathematical strategies to apply, so they have to understand the context to know what math to do before they even begin to do the calculation and the problem solving. And then they have to do the problem, right, right.
One that hasn't been addressed yet tonight, that was of concern that I witnessed in elementary school, and it addresses our IEP children, that the scheduling of these students to try to make the accommodations within their IEP sometimes results in them getting pulled out of core courses like math. So they're not getting there full-time, learning the instruction in core courses because they're having to be pulled out to go to an IEP accommodation. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I'd like to at least throw it out there, because I think it's something that's probably affecting all of our courses. And then particularly, when you're going from the fifth to sixth grade, we're seeing a big gap there, because the students aren't able to take what they've learned in elementary, because they've not been getting the full curriculum, and then having to move on to sixth grade with that. So I just throw that out there.
I think that's very fair, isn't it? It's kind of the same discussion about why we, you know, don't want to, not just special ed students, or special needs students, but other students, pull them out, a very thing to be in courses or classrooms.
Exactly.
I think it's a fair statement.
And I think, I think I can say that that's been an ongoing conversation for the past several years especially, and it's not just mathematics, and just with the scheduling at elementary, they miss something. And I know that that's kind of a high priority. We've been talking, I know the Special Ed Action Team has really been thinking about that, they're working more at the secondary level now, but thinking about how to best deliver those services and still have kids get the core curriculum. So we know it's a struggle, and like you said, there's not an easy answer, but it's definitely something we've been thinking a lot about.
In some meetings that I had attended, talking about math curriculum when it was changing, and we were talking about the flipped instruction at the middle school level, and some parents were commenting that it seems like every three years Parkway wants to change your math curriculum. And so I'm just wondering if there could be some communication as we continue to look at this. When is Parkway going to finally make its mind up on how they're going to teach math? And so I just, you know, let you know that, that in some of the parent meetings I've attended, that parents are wondering, okay, this time we're teaching math this way, now we're going to teach it this way, and then they're going through a constant change of, oh, we're not doing it this way, now we're doing it that way. So I think the communication on how we're going to roll this out might be important.
Yeah, so our change is always a reflection of the standards, but what we're not doing a good enough job is explaining that.
Yeah.
So to your point, something we need to get better at.
I think that I may echo for the board, that probably a large part of our angst and worry is, this is all about kids, and we don't want to go another 14,000 kids and find out we're no better off than what we were. So I think that's one reason why we'll be asking more frequent updates and from you to find out where we are in this, because, you know, we want our kids to leave high school feeling kind of positive about math, and not just, I got through it.
Actually, what we'd like to have, leave every grade level. Was that common? And not just, not just high school.
I just learned yesterday about an enrichment program. It's called Math Circle. Washington University conducts this. It's primarily geared to middle school children, but they also encourage high school students. So I don't know if that's a program that might be of interest to Parkway that we could tap into somehow.
Thank you all very much.
We appreciate your hard work.
Okay, let's move on to 15.01, the first reading of the 2016-2017 academic calendar. Amy Joyce.
I think they probably control it from back there.
There we go. Okay. In your board packet was a draft of the, I can't believe it, 2016-2017 academic calendar. This is a first reading before the Board of Education. The State of Missouri requires that all schools attend at least 174 calendar days and 1,044 hours. And again, this is a first reading, so if you have any input before the February board meeting, you can email me any questions that you may have. The calendar is developed by a joint committee with PNEA and district administrators, and Liz Morrison and Lisa Meredith, to make sure that we have the most, you know, the best academic calendar to deliver quality instruction. So I can answer any questions that you may have at this time. August the 10th. You know, you know?
My fellow board members have heard me say this, but I think the first district committee I ever served on was on the calendar committee. It was almost a war song. It was just, I had no idea what I was walking into back then, but very interesting.
We, we found that we cannot please everyone.
Yes.
And it's very difficult to start after Labor Day and get out before Memorial Day. So...
Yeah, first semester completed prior to whatever.
Right. Exactly. So it's, it's difficult to meet everyone's needs. But I can tell you that this first calendar committee in Parkway was a very positive experience, so.
Our calendars are more consistent, I think, from year to year than they used to be.
Yes.
We have some things that are, you know, consistent. We did get a, a letter, at least I did, an email from a citizen asking why Rockwood and Parkway don't coordinate their spring breaks. So, I don't know if you saw a copy of that, and I know sometimes it's just not possible.
Yeah.
But I thought that was something we should probably look into.
She already did.
Mrs. Feldman responded, and so did Eric Knos from Rockwood. And we all said, and we all said the same thing.
Yeah.
Which is that we all, we have a committee, and we try our best to look at the factors that may involve each year, how holidays fall, or how, but we gotta get those, as Amy says, we gotta get these 174, in our case, 178 days scheduled, and we want to, you know, try to do the best to make sure we're capturing the, the best instructional times.
And I think we have developed, we are a year ahead of possibly Rockwood, so I thought I would be proactive and send our draft 16-17 calendar to them, so if they possibly would want to align with us, since we have it...
Their fault. Right? Not our fault.
My one question was, if you could explain the reasons in the week of January 2nd, that we're, we're taking that entire week off? And if there was some reason or philosophy behind taking that January 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th off? When a lot of families are, who are, who are working or have employers, going to be going back to work on January the 3rd? And is, is it necessary to take that entire week off? Or could they shift doing the activities on the 5th and 6th to the 3rd and the 4th, so that we can get back to school on the 5th and 6th?
Yeah. We had a lot of discussion about the winter break and the length of it, and January 9th is the first day back for second semester. And again, we bantered back and forth about families possibly being out of town. We also talked about January 1st, which is New Year's Day, being the federal holiday, then would be on Monday, the 2nd.
Sure.
And then the days that we, we would need to come back for development, and then just teachers starting a full-blown unit when they get back, and maybe only having one day to jump in. So the conversation was very in-depth about student needs, teacher thoughts, recommendations, and family needs as well. Again, Debbie, it's one of those issues where we're not going to please everyone, we can't meet everyone's needs, but if we are proactive and, and put a calendar out there well enough in advance, families can plan.
Okay.
I think this is maybe a discussion I heard you, you indicated too, that particular, we'd only have one week of winter break, right?
Right.
And, and then we'd get done earlier in May, so then the criticism would be, the same question would be with...
Where would I jump?
At the end of the year, in May, yeah, yeah. So again, I think you had a long discussion about what's the best for everyone.
I think there, there are certain expectations that our community has, for instance, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Some school districts have school, some don't. I think our community expects our kids to be off that day, so they can travel or be with family or whatever, and I think that's probably a protected day. And, you know, I think two weeks off for winter break is something that our community expects.
You might remember last year, this time, we already had six students.
Right. I heard that.
Thank you for picking your hand on the easy one.
Yeah, it's great.
16 calendar, we're not taking a full, well, I guess we are kind of taking a full, because we go back on January the 4th, so we're not taking that entire week off. We get, we're, we're taking six, seven days off as opposed to 11 days in 2016-17.
On the calendar committee.
Don't do it. Don't do it.
Get all my questions out of that time rather than here, right?
Any other questions?
I, I just wondered if we'll ever get to a time, you know, we talk about year-round calendars, different schedule. I mean, I've, I've been around for a while now, and, and we still talk about calendars in kind of a agrarian format, and kind of about, and I think there's some efforts to start talking about engagement, but, because if you think about experiential learning and Spark, and we, I just hosted the superintendent meeting the other day, and those, those students are talking about, they're not talking about, you know, certain hours, they're talking about being engaged and being excited. So, you know, it's one thing to be in class, but what are we also doing to enhance learning, not just while you're in seat time or in school, but what are we doing to build that kind of excitement? And so, some of the work that Lisa and Innovation have been doing about extended year, extended day, I mean, those are the kind of things I hope we could start talking about eventually, than thinking about just day. And I, and I know that families have to, you know, be concerned about this, but it's about engaging students and learning in different sort of ways, and, but I know we gotta talk about calendar, we got to have calendar committees.
Thank you.
Call for special meeting, there is none. 17.0, next scheduled closed session. The next anticipated closed session will be held on February 11th, 2014, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0 recess. 19.0, we are done with our closed session. May have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.